Okay, I call to order the special meeting of the Champaign County Board. It's Monday, December 1st, 2008. The time is 7:37. Roll call.
Ammons?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Beckett?
Here.
Benzel?
Here.
Betts?
Here.
Carter?
Here.
Covert?
Here.
Denitz?
Gladney?
Present.
Hunt?
James?
Here.
Jay?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Knott?
Here.
Kurtz?
Here.
Langenheim? McGinty?
Here.
Mosher?
Here.
Nudo?
Here.
O'Connor?
Here.
Richards?
Here.
Rosales?
Here.
Sap?
Here.
Schrader?
Here.
Smucker?
Here.
Wysocki?
Here.
Wyble?
Here. Real quorum. Seek approval of the agenda or addendum. Who moved it? Mr. Knott, second by Ms. Anderson.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Betts.
I have a question, and may be a parliamentary inquiry, but in terms of the agenda, after public participation, is it possible to add a non-action item, which would be discussion of the State's Attorney's memo, which we made public by unanimous vote at last month's meeting, so that we can discuss that memo without having to go into closed session concerning that memo?
Mr. DeThorn. According to our Parliament chair, we can do that, but it has to be a two-thirds vote.
I move that we amend the agenda, then, to add, after public participation, discussion of the State's Attorney's memorandum regarding the status of the county board's relationship and authority over the director of the nursing home.
Second. Mr. Nudo, second's that. Discussion. Mr. Knott, you have to comment?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. Discussion. This is for discussion purposes only.
I'm in favor of Tom's motion, but I'd like him to explain a little further, just to make sure. If it requires a two-thirds vote, I want everybody to be sure of what we're voting on.
The substance of it is, is that last month, we had it on the agenda to go into closed session, and before we went into closed session, we had received a memorandum from the State's Attorney's office regarding the county board's authority, or apparent authority, or lack of authority regarding our relationship with the nursing home director. And that was distributed to county board members, and we made a-- I made a motion, it was seconded, that it may consider a public document. However, we never actually had the formal discussion on the memorandum, and I think it's vital to have that discussion in public, so that we know what our actual authority is in relationship to the motion that follows it.
Further discussion. Since we require a two-thirds vote, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote. A yes means you want to have-- add this item to the agenda, so you can discuss it.
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Beckett?
Yes.
Benzel?
Yes.
Betts?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Denitz?
Yes.
Gladney?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Knott?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Mosher?
Yes.
Nudo?
Yes.
O'Connor?
Ash.
Richards?
Yes.
Rosales?
Yes.
Sap?
Yeah.
Schrader?
Yes.
Smucker?
Yes.
Wysocki?
Yes.
Wyble?
Yes. Motion carries. Will now move on to public participation.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. We need to vote on-- vote on the addition to the addendum. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we need a clerk reading the notice of the meeting.
Notice is hereby given that a special meeting of the county board, Champaign County, Illinois, will convene on December 1st, 2008, 7:30 PM, or immediately upon the conclusion of the county board organizational meeting in the Lyle Shields Meeting Room, Brookins Administrative Center, 1776 East Washington, in Urbana, Illinois, in said county, for the purpose of closed session pursuant to 5 ILCS 120 slash 2 (C) 17, to discuss the recruitment, credentialing, discipline, or formal peer review of a health professional for an institution providing medical care that is operated by Champaign County, and any other regular business which may come before the board, which said meeting shall continue in session from day to day until the completion of said business.
Move approval.
Moved by Mr. Betts, second by Ms. Wysocki. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now, we have public participation. Ms. Inman?
Nine members, having signed the petition for this special meeting, what I know is the subject that will be discussed in closed session, unless the discussion happens in open session, review of a professional employed by Champaign County Nursing Home. Okay. Our county has been invested, self-consciously, painstakingly, in the appraisal of our department heads since I've been associated with the county board, and this is a good thing. Until the end of June of 2008, the county nursing home administrator was an employee of Champaign County, when on July 1st, this individual became an employee of MPA. The administrator's performance would have been appraised by your own appraisal team in a process that would have gotten underway, what, August, Ms. Bucie, September, for release to the Justice and Social Services Committee, the parent committee for the nursing home, in what, September or October? Probably September or October is when the department head-- October, thank you. So, since, I would say that we are overdue for an appraisal of the performance of the nursing home administrator. The last appraisal, having been received by the Justice and Social Services Committee in October of 2007, that's more than a year. It would have been a year in October of this year. Now, it's November, getting into-- now, we're into December. Of course, it's just December 1st. Of course, I think the employee is always entitled to weigh in on his or her review, without a doubt. But every employee's performance should be reviewed, as are Ms. Bucie's, Mr. Inman's, our coroners, every single department head isn't-- has that review. We are entitled to know the results of that review. And so long as you, the county board, and we, the taxpayers, are paying $88,000 a year salary for that administrator, in addition to the $15,000 a month we pay to MPA, we do need to have a performance appraisal, whether that appraisal is done by the nursing home board of directors, or by MPA itself, we should have that appraisal be conducted. I left at your desk a list. It's just two items that I would like to be included in any review of this department head. One of the things we want is reducing reliance on agency staff. So, I would hope that, month by month, there could be a listing of the number of CNA shifts worked by contractors, the number of LPN shifts worked by contractors, the number of RN shifts worked by contractors in a given 30-day period, and then likewise, the dollar spent on CNAs, LPNs, and RNs every 30 days. Then, the second item regarding reducing employee turnover, I'd like a review of the number of CNAs, the number of LPNs, and the number of RNs offered full-time or part-time employment in every 30-day period, and then the number of CNAs, LPNs, and RNs who successfully complete the probationary period and remain in the employ of the county nursing home. And if this appraisal is done by staff of the MPA, so be it. If the appraisal is done by our nursing home board of directors, that seven-person agency, so be it. But I certainly think that the people of Champaign County are entitled to have the performance appraisal completed. In addition to the two items on my handout, obviously, other things that we're interested in would be raising the resident census as close as possible to the 243-person occupancy for which the home was designed, affecting the desired resident mix, and avoiding the tags, as they were called, when Department of Health, public health officials found, cited us for deficiencies. Thank you for considering this request to have a performance appraisal done timely for our nursing home administrator.
Thank you, Ms. Inman. Okay, moving on to the item that was added to the agenda, is a discussion of the State's Attorney's opinion that was given to us on November 20th, 2008. Mr. Betts?
I guess I want to raise the initial point, which is, in the State's Attorney's opinion, has the county board been divested contractually of the ability to discipline or evaluate the director of the nursing home? I think we're entitled to a yes or no on that question.
Mr. DeThorn?
It was two questions. What were they, discipline or?
I'm sorry, they were compound questions. Has the county board divested itself by entering into the contract with MPA of its ability, as a county board, to evaluate, discipline, et cetera, the director of the nursing home?
Do you want to give me the other one, or you want me to respond?
I think that one's the most critical one.
The opinion that you received said that he's no longer an employee, and that you don't have the ability to discharge him directly.
Okay.
There are other avenues by which he could be disciplined, or discharged, and discharge is, to most people's definitions, particularly those within-- that spend time within the field of employment issues, consider discharge to be the ultimate form, or, yes, discharge is the ultimate form of discipline.
Then, the second part of the opinion is, do we-- the question is, do we have the ability to do this peer evaluation, as a county board, of a person who is not an employee of Champaign County, such as the director of the nursing home? Can we sit there, as a county board, and evaluate his pluses, his minuses, his what-have-you, and not run afoul of our contractual relationship with MPA?
Mr. Betts, I apologize. I did not review the contract. With that question in mind tonight, I don't know the answer. My off-the-top-of-the-head recollection is that the ability to review his performance is not granted the board, or was not retained by the board under the contractual relationship.
The question that I have, then, is, and this is the third part of this question, is, based on your answers to the first two questions, our-- the motion to go into closed session, which is on the agenda, is to discuss credentialing, discipline, peer review of a healthcare professional at an institution providing medical care in Champaign County Nursing Home that is operated by the county. Is, under your analysis, is that motion to go into closed session proper in relationship to the contract?
Well, my reading of the exceptions under the Open Meetings Act, and I would directly compare the provision that's put on your agenda with the one that you typically see, which is for an employee of the county. In this particular instance, the state legislature did not require a relationship exist between the person you're discussing and the county, only that that person be a healthcare professional. And since I don't think it's my place to talk about what the closed session's about, information I have is that person has that job, and can only have that job because of a licensing or credentialing that's required by the state, that has been given by the state, that the institution is providing medical care, which does not necessarily mean a hospital, and that that medical facility is indeed operated by Champaign County. And to my knowledge, all those elements are met. It doesn't require that this person be employed by the county under the paragraph before you.
So, if I were to make a parliamentary objection, you would overrule it?
I don't have the power to overrule anything you say, Mr. Betts. It's probably best.
Let's go with Mr. Nudo first. Mr. Carter? Mr. Carter, go ahead. Microphone, please.
You know, this sounds like a harsh story. How in the woods can you convince me that we own the nursing home, but we don't have no right to hire the employees of the nursing home by supervising? And when, I've been here long enough to know that, in one time, we did. We was, we could supervise the administrator of the nursing home. Now, my point is, when did those laws change, and who changed them? I'd like to know that. And I've been asking--
To my understanding, I'm s-- don't let me step on you.
I've been asking this question time after time, and I can't get no direct answer. Will you please tell us tonight how that got changed, and when, without anybody coming to this body notifying of the change?
In law school, I would have been taught to object to that, based on facts, not in evidence. I believe that the matter was brought before the board at least one time in the summer of this year, which time you entered into a contract with Management Performance Associates. At that time, the only employee relationship that was affected, I believe, was that with Mr. Buffenbarger. All the rest of the folks over there remained your employees, to my knowledge.
I might add that the county board only hires, promotes, fires, department heads, and certain appointed officials. The-- most of the employees do not fall in that category.
Well, I just want for the record, I didn't vote for the change, I mean, I didn't vote for the contract, I didn't vote for the second body, the supervisor board, or whatever that was--
Board of Directors.
--developed and brought up here for us to vote on, because I knew it was wrong. I didn't vote for either one of them. So, I feel pretty proud about that.
Let's go to Mr. Nudo now.
When the contract was written, there were four of us that wrote the contract with MPA, which was approved by this board overwhelmingly. And we had written in there, if you read the simple sentence, it says, "The acceptance of the administrator." And basically, if, I placed on everybody's table, this came out of the agenda from last month's meeting. This was an agreement between the county health department and the public health department, where I bracketed, if we wanted to write it that way, so that this body had the power to do what you're asking us to do, it would have been written this way. But it was a simple statement, for the very reason that personally, and everybody writing that contract, and the majority of people at that meeting voting on the contract, wanted it out of the county board's hands, because of the simple thing like questions of making these kinds of evaluations for somebody. Once again, we're getting into the minutia of how to run a business, and if you take a look at how the business is being run right now, instead of six-figure deficit, we are at $29,000? $21,000. And that's the reason why it was written that way, Mr. Carter.
Well, that's where I didn't vote on it, because--
Mr. Carter, we know you didn't vote for it, you don't have the floor. Mr. Beckett?
Thank you. Mr. DeThorn, I want to thank Mr. Nudo for bringing this forward. It seems to me that some board members, in reading your opinion, thought that the contract may have meant something different than what your opinion said. Other board members, I put myself in this category, thought exactly what you said was what the contract meant, that we, in essence, were ceding authority over the administrator to his new employee. And I've been a little frustrated the last several months, because representatives of the bargaining unit, bargaining unit, and some county board members have said some not-so-nice things about our administrator in public session. I never know what to do. I don't think we should have a debate. You know, if I happen to think he's doing a good job, I don't think that's the kind of thing that you debate about in public. All of our personnel policies are confidential. All of the evaluations that have been talked about, that we do with department heads and others, are done confidentially. The employee who is evaluated participates in that confidential process. We review those processes in closed sessions, the same way we do other employee issues. We don't badmouth our county employees, no matter what they do, and we've had some horrendous county employees, from the sheriff's office to wherever, to highway over the years, to whatever, and I'm glad we don't have any of those issues now. But we never bash those people, even if they've done something wrong. We do it in closed session. We evaluate them in closed session. So, I'm very disturbed by the process that we're in. I agree with Mr. Nudo. I think we've got a consultant that is trying hard, is doing a good job. I feel a tension between us and our consultant, because some people feel that they have to say bad things about our administrator in a public session. I don't think that's necessary. I'm wondering if there's any reason why we can't direct our attorneys, you, the State's attorney, to go back to MPA? And see if we can't set up an evaluation process that's acceptable, that meets the need that the county has, this overall responsibility that we have for our nursing home, and an official there that's very important in the operation of the nursing home, similar to what's this agreement that Mr. Nudo pointed out to us. Is there any reason why we can't go back and try to negotiate a process that would be acceptable to MPA, acceptable to the county board, would address the concern that county board members have, that they misinterpreted what they were voting on when they voted on this contract? Is there any reason why we can't just do that, and see if we can't amend the contract to sort of address this evaluation issue, and put this thing to rest?
There's no legal reason why you couldn't reenter negotiations, try to reopen the contract. All the factors, I think, would be extralegal, whether or not a majority of the board wishes to do that, and whether or not MPA, which I think is controlled by only Mr. Scavato, would be interested in doing that.
I'd like to point out, I do have a peer review that was written up by Mr. Scavato in my possession, but of course, we have to go into closed session to review that. Let's go to Ms. Ammons.
I want to ask Mr. DeThorn, in his opinion, there are a couple of things that I was, I thought maybe I was missing. One of them was, we didn't reestablish what the relationship was at that time, clearly for me, between Mr. Buffenbarger quitting, and then immediately being rehired by MPA, without that little section that's in the contract that addresses the approval process, or acceptance process that was described in the contract. And then, the other thing, by us not doing that, would that silence, if you will, give that waiver to this current acceptance, meaning accepting the current administrator that was seated at the time? Would we be given a waiver, indefinite waiver, of acceptance of the administrator by doing nothing, basically?
Again, my apologies to the board. I didn't realize that the contract itself would be discussed tonight, so I didn't review it. But my recollection is, there is no ability on the part of the board to review his performance, which is why I suggested a broader contractual reading of the-- where I'm in a good faith, whenever you enter into a contract, and I tried to give you some examples of how extreme I thought the behavior would have to be. What I didn't delineate for you, and what is not contained in the contract, is the process by which you would come up with those. There is no process in the contract, there's no process statutorily, there is no process for if any or all of the board members come up with information that they think needs to be addressed. So, I suppose that you would have to bring it to the board's attention somehow.
Let's go to Ms. Covert.
Yeah.
Okay. It was my understanding that once-- They want this person to run their nursing home.
I think--
So, I want to know, you know, what your opinion on that is, or is it valid, or what?
I apologize. I did try to get this out in the earlier opinion, and I wasn't successful. To the extent that you had that right, that right became less and less defensible over time, because it's not in the contract. So, I believe that the board acquiesced, essentially agreed, or waived, I think I've heard that term used, in having Mr. Buffenbarger. And the salient facts for that, I think, are these: The board hired him, the board didn't do anything to remove him, the board was aware he was serving as the administrator during negotiations, the board didn't get anything in the contract saying, "We want to revisit this," and it's been five months.
Let's go with Mr. Jay.
Yeah.
Sorry, Mr. Carter, Mr. Jay. Mr. Jay has not had a chance, that's why I called on Mr. Jay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a different memory, although I would be the first to admit that mine isn't the best memory in the room, by no means. But that wasn't silent. There wasn't a period of silence in there. We knew, when we'd done this contract with MPA, that Mr. Buffenbarger was going with him. We knew that we were giving up control of him. We knew that. That was part of this agreement. That was known. I don't understand where, all of a sudden, we don't know this now. That was part of what we agreed to when we were talking about it. But I could not leave this room tonight without bringing up, one more time, that when we sat down and talked about hiring a outside firm to do this, we were given advice from a county that had had a very successful program, and their advice was simple: The county board needs to give the nursing home board the authority to run the nursing home. It was obvious that we couldn't do it. We were not doing a very good job. And so, what we really need to do is get on and let the nursing home board do their thing.
Mr. Richards?
This isn't my question for counsel, but for the memo a couple weeks ago, and Mr. Jay's statements, it was not my legislative intent to give approval, to keep the administrator by voting for this contract. In fact, I was told that the best way to change administrators was to vote for this contract. But my question for counsel is, aside from the current administrator, what is your reading in the contract of hypothetically, in the future, if MPA brings us another administrator, what, how do you see that we can voice approval? What's the mechanism for that?
You do have an ability, in the event another one is appointed.
Okay.
There are essentially two different categories, if you will. There's the current administrator, and there are successors, and you'd have a chance to, I don't remember the exact wording, but you have a chance to voice your opinion, and I believe you have the ability to say no.
So--
Whoever he chooses as a successor.
So, in the case of a future administrator, a vote would be just fine?
Yes, sir.
Voice approval.
That's correct.
Mr. Smucker?
So, given, so my understanding is, the, so I'm going to ask your opinion on this. My understanding is that the county currently pays the salary of the administrator, the--
I'm not sure that's true.
That's what the contract says.
We pay MPA, MPA pays the administrator.
Okay. But we pay the administrator's salary on top of the MPA charges, and we pay that to MPA. And then, maybe this is a question, also, is the administrator a part of any county healthcare plans?
No, there are no county benefits that are received by the administrator. All of that is dealt with through--
All of that is dealt with through MPA for the administrator.
And this is the question. It's coming your way. Okay.
Sorry?
But given the fact that the county does, that the administrator's salary is delineated in this contract, and that we, that the board, I didn't, but the board voted for that, and that the board has some ability to determine the acceptability of the administrator, how would you describe the relationship between the administrator and the county board?
He works in your facility, is employed by somebody else.
That manages it.
That manages your facility.
So like an independent contractor? Would you call him an independent contractor?
Arguably.
Would you call him a joint employee?
I don't think so.
Even when the county board has the ability to recommend and participate in hiring and firing?
Well, I think that's a question that's not quite been resolved. I think the issue of whether or not the board had any say in hiring or firing him, bear in mind, it's different than any successor, won't be revisited unless the board decides they want to, by a majority vote, conclude that it does indeed have that right. We try to act on that right, and Mr. Scavato decides either to litigate or to agree with us.
And then, just one other question. In your opinion, in the written opinion, there's a strong emphasis on the idea that someone is hired, and then you have, the board then has some sort of opportunity to accept or reject that person, or make their opinion known about them. But I don't see a timeframe in the contract. And I guess I'm wondering where the idea of a timeframe comes from? Because I, when I read it, I read this idea that the administrator needs to be acceptable, and the administrator needs to be approved by the county board, but I don't see the timeframe.
I don't either. The contract is silent as to that. So to the extent that you have a right, and I apologize, I'm talking like a law school professor, if you had that right, that right would diminish over time.
Why would it diminish over time?
If there is a situation where the law assumes you will act on in some way, and if you let time pass by, you gradually lose that right. If your neighbor decides to put his garage on your land, you can't complain about it 20 years later.
But are you saying that if there was a timeframe in here, that would be the case? But there is, if there is no timeframe explicitly, I mean, in the language, there does not seem to be a timeframe with the idea of acceptability, with the idea of approval. If that's the case, then it seems that that's an open-ended question. Is that, am I misreading the contract?
I don't believe you're misreading the contract. My point was, that if the contract is silent, the rules of contract construction that have been observed over hundreds, if not thousands, of years have to step in to fill the gap to the extent they can. And one of the rules of contract construction is the rule of acquiescence. If someone does not act affirmatively to assert a right, over time, that right diminishes, if it ever existed at all.
So in the case, though, of my neighbor building a garage, if my neighbor's garage begins to fall over and look dilapidated, don't I still have the right to object?
You certainly do, if you have a dilapidated garage.
That's all I have.
Mr. Rosales.
My question is that upon termination of the MPA contract with the board, does that also terminate the contract with the county board director?
You're asking if we don't have a relationship with MPA?
In other words, if MPA is hiring him, upon the completion of our contract with MPA, which is three years, do we have an opportunity, again, to revisit who we want to run our facilities?
You'd have to, because he works for MPA. If MPA doesn't have a relationship with you, you don't have a relationship with him.
So in that relationship, it's a three-year relationship? From what I was reading, the first year is hands-on, second year is backing off a little bit, and third year is just sporadic visits to make sure everything is running well?
The three-year question could be answered by looking at the contract. I believe it's three years. I'm not sure I followed the latter part of your question.
Upon the conclusion of that three-year commitment by us to that consulting firm, do we have a right to enter in negotiations with the new nursing home director?
Absolutely.
Which could be, we could open up a national search?
You could.
If we so choose. But we're stuck for three years.
There actually is a clause in the contract where MPA would help us in that search.
But we don't have to accept that advice?
The advice of...
Of the consulting firm.
No, that's right. But they'd help us.
It was just to basically get us out of hot water for that dis-duration period where...
That way, they just don't leave us cold without an administrator, with a license.
But we, at that time, will consult with the advisory board, which has been put in place after this whole process has been taken up.
We'll have, we can have a search, a nationwide search.
And I just want to suggest that we're not necessarily stuck for three years, just from our conversation here, that there are, that there is ambiguity in the question of when and under what conditions, and if there even needs to be preconditions, to us questioning the acceptability of the administrator. So it's not clear in the contract at all that there is, there is no method for finding the administrator acceptable.
But that's not...
It's simply open-ended. When the administrator, this is, it seems to me, when the administrator becomes unacceptable, then the board could take action. I guess that, and maybe that's a question, if that's a fair reading, or you would disagree with that?
I'm not trying to sidestep your question, but let me know if this answers it. The board, meaning a majority of the board, would have to determine that there is, that he's unacceptable, in order for anything else to happen.
But essentially...
So I'm not telling you that you have that process, but I'm telling you, before you even get there, there's got to be a conclusion, and because this is a single body, there has to be one single conclusion by a majority of the board, that that's an issue.
In a sense, what triggers this process is the board finding the administrator unacceptable.
Absolutely not.
But that's how I read it.
Well, it's your first night.
Well, you have a right to read it that way. Let's go to Mr. Nudo.
Yeah, there's a couple of things here that we need to get into perspective here. We're talking as if this MPA is doing something to the detriment of this. I don't understand the line that we're getting into here. And we're not stuck for three years, Mr. Rosales. We're not stuck with an administrator. And I don't understand the line that we're taking here. Secondly, to Mr. Beckett's point, the last thing that I did when I wrote that contract was to bring back any evaluation back into this body, that the MPA would have that evaluation, you would have the, the role I think we should take, is if anybody has any issues of malfeasance, negligence, fraud, you should bring it to the nursing home board, or directly to Mr. Scavato at MPA. Because this gentleman is not our employee. I don't know how much clearer we can make this. So I'm a little confused as to the line of questioning, as to what MPA is doing to the detriment of the nursing home board, nursing home, and this body, and also the fact that, I will bring up one thing. I had Cat Bork print the transcript of the conversation during the MPA vote, and it's very clear that, as Mr. Jay said, it was very clear that Mr. Buffenbarger was part and parcel with this. There's an exchange between Jennifer and I, where she directly asked the question, "Will Andrew be the administrator?" And I answered in the affirmative, into the fact that it would be, if we sign, if we did this deal on Thursday, it would happen on Monday. It could happen as fast as Monday. So it was said in a transcript that this was there. There were no secrets here. There was nobody that pushed Mr. Buffenbarger on us. This was a part and parcel. And I think a part of Mr. DeThorn's interpretation of it, not only is the fact that we haven't acted on it in five months, but there was an assumption that Mr. Buffenbarger was a part of MPA. And when we voted for MPA, he was assumed to be the administrator. Think about it. Six months to have somebody learning, somebody's learning curve. You want to hire somebody tomorrow, you've got six months down the road before he produces. That's just the nature of new people.
Let Mr. Moser first. He's not spoken yet.
You know, I've been here 16 years, along with a lot of other people, and for 16 years, that nursing home's lost money. We've hired and fired, or had other administrators resign. Mr. Buffenbarger's the fourth one since I've been here. And when I look at that board, or that home, a year ago, losing $100,000 a month, and now it's down to 20, or 21, or 25, I'm just absolutely amazed that you can sit here tonight and say, "We needed a new administrator." Something's gone right over there. There's more people in those beds, and there's never, ever been total agreement between the staff and the administrator since I've been here. There's been beaucoup grievances filed against the last two. I don't know how many I looked at when I was chairman of this board. Barb looked at them, and now Pius is looking at them. And I'm sorry, there's not harmony over there, but this county invested $2 million worth of the taxpayers' money in that home, trying to save it for the last four years, and quite frankly, we're up against spending any more money to try to save it. And we've got a legal responsibility to save it. If MTA walks away from that, we're still on the hook to keep it open. And what are we going to pay with it? We've got to hope we get it where it'll break even, or where we can stand a little bit in the general corporate fund to subsidize it, to keep it open, but we've got to keep it open. And this way has been the only way that we've ever seen any improvement in the bottom line of that thing since I've been on this board. They had over $1 million in surplus money in 1992, and it's gone. It was gone in 2001, and we subsidized it out of the general corporate fund, which is taxpayer money on top of a three-cent levy. They've got to pay personnel, and if they didn't have that, I don't know where we'd be. And that's the situation, and I don't know why in the world we can't just let this thing play out and see if this group can get it fixed. And I don't see what bringing another employee in there to try to recycle that whole operation's going to do for the bottom line, and the bottom line is what we've got to look at.
Mr. O'Connor.
My question might be for Mr. DeThorn, or maybe Dennis Inland could answer it. Denny, when we do our customary contracts in your end of things, do we have any say-so with the contractor about who they're going to put on our job as superintendent? Any legal say-so?
Typically, we do.
Mr. Carter.
Yes. I'd just like to say that those of us, and from now on, say, the majority of the board, because some of us didn't buy that, and we tried, we tried to convince the rest of this board that that was going to happen. And we was jumped on one night right here, and was accused of playing politics, and got really serious about this. Now, we knew that if we, well, I did, and the rest of us, two or three or four of us, that this was going to happen. I can't see why the others couldn't understand that. When you're going to vote something in to come back and bite you down the road, why you accept that? How can you accept that? And next point, and I'm going to, because I'm getting tired of, I'm getting tired of this, because you hear one thing, one month, next month you hear something else, you don't have authority, or you do have authority. Now, when you have a legal team that's supposed to be guiding you down the road to keep you out of these situations, what happened? Why wasn't we told? Some, I mean, the rest of them, because some of them knew that it was wrong. We knew it was wrong. But the rest of them said here, the majority, it bit that. Now you have the justice say, "Oh, we're going to go back and plead come over." That's changing. Is that, that's kind of embarrassing. I'm through.
Mr. Betts.
The reason I put this memo on the agenda wasn't to have a long elaborate discussion on the merits and demerits of what we did in the past in relationship to that contract, whether it was a wise contract or not. It was to address the threshold questions of whether or not we had authority to deal with this issue. I'm satisfied with the answer I have been given by the parliamentarian and state's attorney, which is why when the motion to go into closed session comes up, I'm going to vote no.
Mr. Knott.
I, along with Mr. Nudo, initiated the petition for this meeting, and my goal's been met through this discussion. I guess, you know, to elaborate on some of what others said, I guess I'm still concerned that, as sophisticated and complicated as healthcare is today, why the 27 of us believe that we can come once a month and manage that situation? It's not like it was 20, 30, 50, 75 years ago. It's a complicated world in healthcare. You know, we tried, we've been through administrators, we've been willing to put taxpayer money into the bottom line to help that home survive. But quite frankly, we, as I said last week, we don't have the expertise to run it. That's why we've always hired administrator. The administrator came with a plan, you know, a year ago, said, "I'd like to have an advisory board to help me get through these challenges, and I'd like to have some outside assistance to also get that done." We're on that track. I guess what I failed through all these discussions to hear is the alternative, you know, or a plan otherwise. You know, we've said lots of things we don't like, but I've not heard one person come in with anything to the table that says, "You know what? This is a better idea." If you got one, I want to hear it. I mean, we've already went from $100,000 a month as a loss to 20. 20's still too much, but I think we're on the right track. If any of you have a plan, I want to hear it, because I've not heard it. I've only heard things, insinuations and things like that, and I think it's time to come to a halt. We need to let this play out, get back into the positive side, and that's what the taxpayers asked us to do, and I think that's what we need to do.
Ms. Ammons first.
Thank you. I agree with a portion of what Mr. Knott just said, but the most important thing is that there was an option that was presented to this board that was not looked at, which would be consulting with other outside agencies who are specializing in nursing home administration as opposed to a management company, as opposed to maintaining an administrator that may have some questionable performance, that we don't know. The other thing is that the contract that was put before this board, of which I did vote no for, had a blank line in it when it came to the administrator, and the question that was posed was never unequivocally said, "Yes, this is going to be." And then finally, I'll say that because people do not want to discuss the status of the nursing home, it won't go away. Certainly, we have a current investigation that's going on, that we have no idea what's happening with that, that will keep this in the forefront. We have staff who are very, as was expressed early, not in line with the management, which is a concern and should be a concern for this board. And so we will certainly not end this discussion on the administrator, or the management, or the employees at this meeting, because people just really don't want to talk about it anymore. And I would hope that people get more involved, as a matter of fact, and not less.
Mr. Smucker. I want to make clear that my comments in no way were a criticism of MPA or the administrator. We're here to talk, the point on the agenda was a discussion of the state's attorney's opinion. That's what my questions were directed at. I, you know, if we're going to have a debate about where we should go from here, that would be great. That's not what I was having. I understand that people are reading into that, but what I'm primarily concerned about is the county withdrawing... But what I'm primarily concerned about is the county withdrawing its responsibility for the nursing home, abnegating its responsibility for the nursing home, and increasingly giving away its authority when it comes to the nursing home. I want to see the nursing home succeed. I understand Mr. Mosher's frustration of seeing it for years and years and years, and all of a sudden now, it looks like things are going in the right direction, finally. I want to see it go in the right direction. But I also want to understand the situation we're in right now. What does this contract mean? What authority do we have and not have? That was the essence of my questions. And just one final thing in response to Mr. Knott. I just, I've heard you say this several times, and now I'm finally on the board and I get to respond, so I'm excited to do this. But, you know, we don't have to, we're not the administrators of the nursing, I couldn't run a nursing home. And maybe nobody on this board could. But that's not our job. Our job is to hire the administrator and evaluate whether the administrator is running the home. And that is what we do for every department. And I feel, you know, that we, you know, I don't know the intricacies of, and probably most of us here don't know the intricacies of clearing roads of snow. But people here can hire somebody in charge of the highway department, and they can figure out if the highway department is coming in over or under budget, and they can figure out if there's, you know, other problems in the department. And that's why we're elected. So what concerns me is us continually giving away our responsibility. That's, you know, those were the essence of my questions. And, you know, thank you for listening.
Let's go to Mr. Nudel.
I've spoken too many times.
Okay. Mr. Sapp.
Mr. Smucker just brought up a couple of good points that I want to, I guess, touch base on, in the fact that he brings up that we, as a board, go out and we hire firms to do work for us, third-party firms. We bring them in and they do the work. But 27 county board members do not go directly to those firms and file complaints. This evening, we went through an organizational meeting, and we have a county board chairman. And I would encourage anyone here, if they have specific concerns, and we've been given the opinion from the state's attorney's office that we cannot go directly or discuss directly the administrator's performance, and I agree with Mr. Beckett when he says we shouldn't be discussing that in open anyway, but we have the ability, any one of us, to go to our county board chairman and express specific concerns to him, to go back and relay to the management consulting firm, and to the owners of that firm, and say, "We are unhappy," whether it's we as a whole having a discussion and telling him to tell MPA, or individuals going to him. He's got, from what I understand, an evaluation form that's been provided to him to fill out.
I could point out that actually, you can go to him as an individual, not as a county board member. Because a county board member, you have to operate as a body. But you can attend those meetings as an individual and talk to them.
No, but I mean, discuss with you, share our opinions with you.
Certainly, you can discuss with me as a county board member.
Correct. So that you can inform those individuals as our representative and as overseeing that contract, to make sure it's being done. So, you know, I hear a lot of people saying that they don't have a voice, they don't have opinion, they can't express themselves. And I personally believe you do. You know, I believe you have the ability to go and have those, have your opinions or your concerns, specific concerns, heard.
Ms. Bysakki.
I would just add to Mr. Sapp's comments, an addition to the board chair. You also have two county board members who serve on that nursing home board. And again, I think part of the rationale for structuring it that way was so that they can be the conduit between this organization and that nursing home board. And I would have no hesitation going to either Jan or Al and expressing some of my doubts or concerns. And frankly, I mean, I've taken it on myself to go to their meetings, and there is public participation at their meetings. And if I felt compelled to make a statement, I would certainly do so. So, you know, I don't think we should complain about not having access, or that we're whittling away responsibility and power here. I think it's a matter of feeling compelled enough to use it.
Mr. Magenti.
Very many good comments. I believe that we are not giving away any power per se in our current arrangement. We agreed to this contract overwhelmingly. There have been a lot of good thoughts as to what has and has not been working, but the question is, where do we go from here? Mr. Betts brought that up. I read, Dave, your opinion as one where Andrew is an employee of MPA. And I've been a consultant for a long time. When an organization's had a problem with my firm, they haven't asked me to evaluate an individual's performance. They deal with me as a firm, and either continue a relationship with me, or agree to cease it or modify the relationship. The same thing applies here. I think that we have the ability to express to MPA and Mr. Scavato, who's been quite open to opinion, anything that we've got. He even has open sessions before nursing home board meetings, if I'm not mistaken, where he'll just take comments 30 minutes before each meeting. I think that that is an open policy. I think that he's been very candid with his comments. And most importantly, and I don't play finance chair very often, but look at the numbers improve. Mr. Mosher mentioned it. I've only been on for four years, and I've seen a tremendous amount of red. And when you see less red in what has been a situation that has depleted our general fund to the point where we may have to ask other departments for cuts this year, because of how much we've committed to the nursing home, I think that we need to look seriously at picking our battles here. You know, we have a situation where, not too long ago, we came up with a list of, I don't know how many ideas, 70-some ideas, creative ideas that we could use at the nursing home to generate revenue, to control expenses. And there hasn't been a whole lot of talk about that tonight. You know, I think that we need to provide those ideas to the firm that we've hired, who appears to be doing a good job, and let them do their job with the personnel that they choose. We can provide opinion, but let's get on with the business at hand and pick our battles a bit more carefully.
Ms. Ammons.
I just wanted to go back to what Mr. Beckett suggested earlier in this discussion, for us to possibly instruct the staff to enter into a discussion with MPA on the contract to address the issues that are still outstanding and will be outstanding unless there's some action taken to address that issue. Mr. Beckett recommended that we ask them to discuss with us provisions. How do we actually get this work done in overseeing this project?
I think that'd have to go through a policy committee. Mr. Nudel.
Well, the structure is in the contract, and I believe that we've discussed a number of times, that if you have any issues, you should bring it to Mr. Scavato directly, or to Dr. Lansford. And you will have a conduit through the nursing home board. I don't choose to have this thing open, I don't choose to open up the contract again, and I certainly don't choose to have some direct conduit between the county board and Mr. Scavato. I think that we've got a funnel, we've got a pipeline. We recently introduced into union negotiations another funnel, another pipeline with the union and Mr. Scavato, better that issue. So I think we're just inserting ourselves again. I don't see the need for it. You know, the other thing is, I want to bring this up as a point of clarity for what we do in this body. The only thing we bring into this world and leave with is our name. That's all we take in and take out. And we have dismerched, over the year, over the year I've been on the board, a gentleman's name, and he has recourse. And so I would, again, warn for the umpteenth time, that all of these issues should be done in confidence, and that is the full purpose of having a conduit between the nursing home board and Mr. Scavato directly, rather than bringing it up either in closed or open session. Because as Mr. Knott just said to me just a second ago, we're forgetting the patients, the people that are in the patient census here. How do you think they feel with all of the information that's going on with the person who is the administrator? And I just warn everybody once again, as I read in the paper, two lawyers in the caucus did, that we have a right to protect our employees' personnel rights. And so I want to bring that up again. Thank you.
Mr. Gladney.
Well, it's interesting, Mr. Nudel brings up name, because last time I looked, the name was the Champagne County Nursing Home. It's not the private nursing home with some different name. It's Champagne County. So I'm sorry if some of us still feel the need to talk about our nursing home, and not always in confidence. I understand that there is a time and a place for that. But I don't know. I wonder how the taxpayers feel if we discuss, you know, everything in confidence all the time, out of the public sight and out of the public ear. I don't know. I would guess that they probably don't appreciate that very much. You know, I guess some of us look at the contract differently. I hope we can have a civilized discussion and disagreement about that. I think for the most part tonight, it's been that way. You know, I look at the contract and I see where, you know, my memory may be faulty, I don't remember a name being assigned to the nursing home administrator in that contract. I also remember the contract saying that MPA could hire an administrator for the nursing home that the county board finds acceptable. In hindsight, I think that language was a bit ambiguous, and now is probably part of the mess we're in tonight, trying to figure that out and what that means. You know, Mr. DeThorn has his opinion on what that means. I have a different one. Someone probably has a different one than that. And I just repeat, I understand the need at times, you know, to have conversations about nursing home matters or employees in confidence in a closed session. I think we get that. I think all of us get that. But I think some of us feel there's been probably a little too much of that. And I don't think there's anything wrong with having a discussion. And I'll be honest, you know, I've been on the board two years, and I hear a lot of people sometimes talk about having discussions, and talking about how that's a good thing. But then when it comes time to actually have the discussion, then I see people trying to hush up, or becoming extremely disrespectful to those whose opinions they disagree with. So I think we're all aware, some of us have different opinions on this and other matters. And I just hope that the last thing that any of us want to do is to close discussion or stifle any kind of dissent, simply because it may be an opinion that some of us don't agree with all the time. Thank you.
Mr. James.
I just want to follow up with what Matt said. And it seems like sometimes decisions are made, and then three, four months down the road, a group decides, well, all of a sudden, that isn't the right decision, we need to go back and revisit it. We take up a lot of time doing that. We're always second guessing. We all sit in the same meetings. Some of the questions I'm hearing here tonight should have been asked at those other meetings. You know, the records are there, they've been quoted. You know, I attend a lot of meetings, and I'm one that probably don't hear everything that goes on, but I do try to listen. And I remember what I remember, but if I'm in doubt, I ask for the records, or I ask Mr. Wyble, or Mr. Inman, or whoever. But we're sitting here arguing about things that's already been cast. I'm a firm believer, as Greg and everybody else has been saying, some of these new board members, that we need to move forward and we need to make some changes. And when I hear all this talk, I mean, I deal with a lot of contracts, and I have throughout my career. What Brendan said is absolutely right. We go after the person or the firm that holds the contract. We're sitting here talking about an individual that really is in that contract, no matter how he's being paid, or where the money's coming from, he's in part of that contract. And when we gave up that right, that's the way we did it. So if we have a gripe or a concern, we need to have the committee look at that contract, go through it, try to make some changes if we can. But all this arguing all the time, and who said what, and let's do this, I sit in them committees, and there's a lot of times, everybody can't wait to get home to watch a basketball game, and I'm sitting there wanting to debate something. So we've got nobody to blame but ourselves, and that's why we're in the mess we're in. And at the committee meetings, if we have to spend three hours, spend three hours. But to always be second guessing this, we're taking up way too much time, and I'm rambling on because I feel like I needed the mic for a while. But anyway, that's my thought on this.
Thank you, Mr. James. Ms. Anderson.
Just a couple of things. My recollection, when we accepted the contract with MPA, was that we did have to go through that procedure of Mr. Buffenbarger resigning and then being hired. And I felt that the board knew that Mr. Buffenbarger would be that administrator, and that the contract would, giving us approval, would apply to when a next administrator, you know, would come. I felt a bit frustrated at our last meeting, when Mr. Scavato was here, made himself available to us, so that we could, in a closed session, hear some of the things that are being done in response to concerns about staff. Al and I are privileged to some of that, but it's been a closed session, and Mr. DeThorn has emphasized that we can't share that with you. But I think, you know, we could have learned more, and perhaps that will be possible to have him at another time do that. But I would hope that you would, if you do know things, that you do share with Al and I, or Mr. Scavato. He's always very available through phone, or email, or what have you.
Ms. Corr.
I'd like to say that I don't quite remember it like Jan remember it. When I found out that MPA had hired the administrator, I was rather shocked, because we had asked the administrator to do several things for us. And he had been on board with MPA for about a month. And I did request that we put it on the agenda so we could talk about it. But it was never put on the agenda until it was put on this agenda. And we were never aware that he was eventually going to be the one who's going to be the administrator.
I was not talking about after MPA came on, it was within the discussion of what, before we voted on whether we would accept MPA or not. Oh, that's.
Smucker.
So I wasn't here at all for that vote, and I might have been sitting over here, but I really don't remember. But what my concern is now is, how do we go forward? And what, we have the advantage of having MPA for about two and a half more years. And they are going to train the next administrator. I hope, I hope that whoever is the administrator, or the current administrator, receives all the benefit of their knowledge and their skills, and can carry that out into the future, so that we can get back to running the nursing home in the most efficient way possible. So my question isn't about the past, about what people thought, you know, here or there, about, I'm sorry, what people thought in the past that the contract was supposed to mean, or what was supposed to happen. The question is, where do we go forward, and what, even do we have any room to make a decision on how we go forward? Or do we have to wait for three years to make that decision? We have, I feel like, you know, we have this opportunity right now to have somebody trained at a very high level, and, you know, the question is, do we get a choice in who that person is?
Let's go to Mr. Jay.
Is Mr. Betts still with us? He started this. His question, and I thought it was, yeah, his question I thought was pertinent and important. I think most of us actually uphold Mr. DeThorn's opinion. And it was an opinion, by the way. But I think we, I think most of us understand that in that opinion, he says that he's not our employee. I think we can all live with that, or for the most of us. And for those of you that can't, that's okay. But we need to do something. And I think we were given the guidelines tonight of what you can do if you're not satisfied. There are some avenues and ways that you can... There, there's some avenues and ways that you can register your complaints, or your suggestions, or your concerns, so why don't we do that? But I think two things we need to understand is, he's not our employee, we need to let that go. If you don't like it, we need to follow what was suggested tonight. We need to tell Mr. DeThorn he did a good job, but if you, if you think he did, if he didn't, you can tell him that also. But I think most of us do believe that his opinion was correct. That was what Mr. Betts started this whole thing on, and we really never got a clear cut answer. So Tom, I thank you for starting it. I don't know how we're gonna finish it.
Mr. James, did you have a comment?
Well, I was just gonna say, since discussion's going on and it's sort of getting repeated here, was there a question on the floor, something we need to go on?
Strictly discussion.
Well, that, that solved my dilemma.
We cannot take action. That's correct. Discussion only. You can voice opinions, that's about all it can do. Further discussion on this item. Seeing none, we'll move on. Is there anybody who wants to go into closed session?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Beckett, seconded by most everybody else. Mr. Knott, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Drive home safely, the roads are nasty.